...city council work-study session for June 20th, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lee Caldwell.
No, it wasn't. I would have remembered Lee Caldwell. You'll have to ask Bob yourself.
I rattled off thirty people.
Was it a male name or a female?
It was a guy, but I can't.
Yes, he would remember that was Paul.
Yeah, I would have remembered that too.
Well, Paul wasn't the congressman at that time.
Yeah. All right, let's get to, we've got two items on tonight's agenda, and Nick says he'll get us out of here in forty-five minutes, and then we have a brief executive session, so.
I was thinking forty-five minutes including the executive session, but.
Wow, so well, pressure's on.
Let's make it up for Christmas.
So as everyone's aware, we have been working on a new sign code since September of last year, and the reason that we chose to go through the painful experience of writing a new sign code is because of the Supreme Court decision Reed versus Gilbert, Arizona, which the Supreme Court ruled that we can't regulate signs in a content-specific way. Sign regulations have to be content-neutral. And so, we set out in September, we formed an advisory committee, and Councilmember Donlin sat on that committee along with planning commissioners and a handful of citizens, including one of our local signmakers. And we initially met and we discussed what are good examples of signs in the city and what are bad examples of signs, and what should our objectives of writing a sign code be. And at that same time, I had been working with the Association of Washington Cities to try to solve the sign code challenge as a result of the Reed decision, and so AWC produced a sign code document that we could use and adapt and make our own. And so, we set out and over the course of six or eight advisory committee meetings, we went through all of the draft AWC regulations and ultimately got to a document that we thought we could recommend to the planning commission, and we sent it to the planning commission for review, and they began their review in May, and it turned out to be something that they were pretty comfortable with. And I feel like, first of all, the advisory committee was one of the most productive committees I've ever worked with. I think it was the smoothest committee process we've ever had. And so, whether you agree with the decision from the Supreme Court or not, I think my takeaway is that it certainly made figuring a lot of these things out a lot easier than it had been previously because there were fewer decisions to make when you're not looking at content. So, the document that's before you tonight has been recommended by the sign committee. It was revised and then recommended by the planning commission. And then, since the planning commission recommendation, it's gone to the Economic Development and Tourism Committee for review. And in addition, AWC provided they had made some minor updates to the original document that they produced. And since we had started this before they produced their revisions, there's a handful of minor, real minor changes that have been made as a result of reviewing their most recent draft of this. But I think there's a handful of issues that we should discuss and make sure that the city council is comfortable with before we move forward. And the big item that was most debated at the planning commission meeting was the issue of feather signs, and ultimately, they decided to stick with the advisory committee recommendation. We took this to the Economic Development and Tourism Committee, and they also discussed feather signs, and that committee suggested that they should be brought back to the council with a couple of alternatives just for discussion purposes here tonight. And so, you'll find that there are two one-and-a-half-page handouts at the back of the sign chapter of your packet that had some alternative language, one dealing with the quantity of feather signs, the other dealing with restricting them on Tremont and Sedgwick, which are, I think the thought was that those are kind of our gateways to the city, and we should try to keep those looking as attractive as possible. And then, the other items that the committee, the Economic Development Committee pointed out, was that there needed to be some clarity with regard to electronic message center signs and the requirements for when signs can be lit and unlit based on how a business is opened. And so, we provided some clarifying language to state that if a business closes, their electronic message center sign has to turn off when the business closes or at eleven o'clock, whichever is later. And then.
Earlier, maybe?
No, later. You can go till eleven, or if it's open twenty-four hours, it can stay on all night. But it does have to be dimmed in the evening hours. So, there is also a request for some clarification with regard to changeable copy signs if they're in a mixed-use building where there's both residential and commercial uses in the same building. Those types of signs had said that they're only allowed for non-residential uses, and we really hadn't considered a mixed-use setting. And so, we added a little bit of language there to explicitly state that changeable copy signs could be used in the context of a mixed-use building, although I'm not even sure if anybody makes those types of signs anymore, but I suppose movie theaters still might use them, and anybody who's going for a more work trope might put up that sort of sign. And then, finally, oh, and as I mentioned, the feather sign issue, there was language that was provided by one of the planning commissioners that we included in the packet. And, oh, I'm sorry, the first one was there is optional language, and this is on page fifteen of one-on-one in the packet. And this was language that AWC said if you want to have an upper limit on how much signage is allowed for any business or use, you could add, this adds a limit that just looks at how much frontage you have, how far back from the road the building is set. And even though you might be allowed a hundred square feet on your wall sign, your total signage for everything that's occurring in a business is capped at some upper limit. And so, the sign committee had recommended not including this. We left it in for the planning commission to discuss, and they actually, that was one thing that we just never got around to discussing, and so, they didn't weigh in on it one way or another.
Is this this number three that's in red?
It's, it's actually on sixteen, I'm sorry.
Sixteen, okay.
Section D. The section starts on page fifteen, and then. So, the optional limitation on sign area, which right now is struck through, I'm comfortable leaving it in strike-through, but if you wanted to be more conservative on signage, you might want to put that in place, which would, it provides some upper limits on total signage, but it is a little bit more generous for businesses that are set more than a hundred feet back from the road. So, a Walmart or a big-box store where you have a huge parking lot and you're having to look further away from the road to see something, then it allows you a twenty-five percent increase on what you're allowed overall. So, I think functionally, the regulation makes sense. You know, practically, is it something that is going to be needed in Port Orchard or not? I think you would probably see some communities adopt it, and I would imagine somebody like Gig Harbor or Bainbridge Island would probably say, yes, we want an upper limit on signage. And, you know, I think it's just a judgment call for what Port Orchard's businesses' needs are and what our streets look like and what we want them to look like.
Did the Economic Development Tourism Committee discuss that? Sorry, I couldn't stop.
They pointed it out that they weren't sure whether that was meant to be included or excluded, but we didn't get into the merits of it one way or another. So, and then, other than that, there were, as I mentioned, I've highlighted all of the AWC revisions, and they're noted in the body of what's presented tonight. Again, I don't think we need to go into those. They're mostly pretty minor. I think all of them are pretty minor anyway. The one thing that I did want to point out that we've also added is, it became apparent that we, I wanted to do a better job of explicitly stating whether a sign permit is or isn't required for a particular sign permit type. And so, if you go to part four, which is on page twenty-nine, this is where all the different types of signs are listed, which are accessory signs, portable signs, freestanding signs. And in that opening sentence of each of those sign types, I explicitly added language to say a sign permit is required for this type or a sign permit is not required for this type, so that there's no confusion. I think the wording that was at the beginning of the sign ordinance had the same effect, but it was much harder to clearly understand that.
Yeah, this is less big, nice.
So, that's essentially the sign code. I'm happy to answer any specific questions about it. Our intent is to bring this forward on the twenty-seventh unless the council feels that significant revisions are needed. And I think it's really up to you to talk about feather signs, the optional language, and any other changes you might want to propose if there are any.
There's a pretty good example here, too. The car dealership we're looking at there is Mr. Titus's Subaru dealership in South Tacoma Way.
What page?
In the pictures at the end.
Seventy-seven, seventy-four.
What was the later of the feather sign discussion?
Economic Development, and I do want to offer another suggestion for us, option for us to talk about. It's my understanding that the feather signs and the A-board signs were very important to the merchants and the people that were sitting around the sign committee meeting. So, with that, I don't want to say we can't have feather signs, because they seem to be important. We do have in here a size restriction, three feet by twelve feet is maximum. And they have so that you can put up to twelve on the lot every ten feet, up to a maximum of twelve. And when Economic Development talked about it, my take on it was that most of the signage we have is either directional or informational. That's why the signs are there, turn here, or, you know, the name of the business is apparent. And the feather signs are meant to draw, to distract or draw attention to the business. So, that's how I had a take on them. And my initial thought and one of the options in here is going down Tremont or going down Sedgwick, where those are roads that are designed to move traffic, and we have more volume on those end of the streets. We didn't need distracting things. And so, I was thinking perhaps we would prohibit them or limit them on those particular streets. I now thought about it, and I have paid attention to feather signs that we see all over the place in many jurisdictions, just arbitrarily placed. So, I was thinking, do we want to have a requirement that if more than one or more than two feather signs are going to be displayed, that come forth with a plan, a landscaping plan, or a plan as to how they're going to be displayed on their property? Rather, because right now, they're just kind of random out there. And when I looked at the photo from the car dealership, that was obviously well-designed. You know, they had banner signs, they had feather signs. It's obviously all part of how they present their business. So, I don't know that I want to discourage that, but you can drive by businesses on Jackson or basically anywhere and see feather signs just randomly, and that's what I want to avoid. So, I thought maybe if we had a provision in here that said that they're going to have more than multiple feather signs, that they had to bring that forward with some sort of design board. I'm just.
How are we gonna, I guess, interpret that or enforce it?
What would our review burn out again? How would we condition that? Would we lessen because it's got a nice landscaping plan, or?
Yeah, or is visually attractive and is not totally distracting?
It's so subjective, though.
No, it is. I realize that, but I was offering it as an option for us to talk about. Because there are four new feather signs on Sedgwick. And I tried to envision those with twelve. Now, I don't know if those are two lots, so we could have twenty-four feather signs there, or if that is in fact one lot and there would be. But coming up there, you know, that would, in my opinion, be a distraction. And when you think of other businesses along there, it just seems distracting to me.
And I share the concern for safety and lack of distraction while driving, but I think, and I think you'd agree, we want to balance it with promoting their business.
Correct, exactly.
So, we're trying to figure out what is the formula there. One thing that struck me about page seventy-seven where you see, you know, I guess this is one that's better designed.
Page seventy-seven?
Yeah, is the, the feather signs are actually further back from the street or the right-of-way. I'm not sure how you define it, but they're not right up close to the street. Like, I think there's an example of some near the food truck on Sedgwick, near the health center. And part of that is that they might be overdone, you know. I guess we have to define what is overdone.
I wonder if they're not allowed in right-of-way, which is why they've tucked them away there.
Yeah.
They look nice, actually.
Yeah, because they're back.
Yeah, right. And the Hazelwood complex does that also. The signage is mostly back in. It's very nicely landscaped.
With that picture on page seventy-seven, you do have some landscaping and sidewalk features, which makes that a little more attractive.
Well, they're not ten feet apart either. I mean, if they had one every ten feet here, oh, smokes.
And they're not in the front district part either, so.
And I just want to capitalize on both of the recent comments about safety. We don't have bike lanes in Port Orchard. And I've experienced firsthand kind of.
We will on Tremont.
We will. But I want to be sensitive to those distractions in some of these corridors and expect to pedestrian and pedestrian safety.
I agree.
So, I'm hearing some, maybe some set, what do you think about setback requirements? Even back from the property line?
I think that's worth considering, and I think what Mr. Deener said about, you know, you could limit this to where there are shoulders or bike lanes or sidewalks, or, I mean, it could be, you would have to have a complete street or something along those lines. I guess, we have, we have two written alternatives, and so, if we're going to come up with something, this group would have to come up with it tonight. And so, one alternative would be just to simply send this particular issue back to the committee and ask, and try to outline your concerns, but continue working on that as an add-on to this, because I don't know if we're going to figure it out in a week's time in time to get a new sign code.
This is like one issue, if I may, that we might remand back and go forward with the balance.
Because I'm envisioning, like, the Piperberry complex, where they've got the, you know, the road, the big ditch, and all that grass back up to the building. What's the harm if it's up there on the hill, the feather sign that's twenty feet back from the fog line?
Sure, but with that vision, is ten feet too close?
No, no, and I haven't even addressed quantity. But the part is the distance back from the fog line and a bicyclist or a pedestrian, and it's distraction, I think, you know, I think we're on to something here.
Yeah.
Back from the fog line, I don't know what that number is.
Page seventy-seven, they're probably forty feet apart. One, two, three, four, five cars in between the two of them.
And I saw some language in one of these iterations, too, where there was a, you know, no, you know, minimum two and, you know.
We talked about a minimum of two. And the minimum of two, the reason that the ten-foot spacing came out, I believe, is because of Carter's chocolates. And they have two feather signs now on either side of their entrance, but they're in a very narrow space, I guess. And so, the thought was that you would need to allow them to be within ten feet of one another in order to kind of mark the outline of your building if you wanted to have two signs. So, maybe if you gave businesses, single-tenant businesses a minimum of two, and multi-tenant businesses would have to be spaced according to the other spacing requirements, and then set like a thirty or forty foot.
And then, some sort of a maximum, I.
Yeah.
Yes.
Twelve might not be bad.
Page seventy-seven, I think those pole signs, pole sign, all advertise that business.
Yeah.
But they're so tastefully dark that you don't see them.
It's really nicely done.
They could be parking signs and don't park here, from two to four.
So, how would we go, so would we just not include in the version that goes?
We could bring forward a version without any mention of feather signs for now, and the council could direct us to go back and work on it.
To that committee or the planning commission?
Either. I think, I'm sure the committee would be willing.
Okay, so, the concerns. Okay, so, the concerns I heard was distance from the fog line, minimums, and maximums. And then, potentially, well, I think the spacing.
Well, even if there's a sidewalk, too, because if they're leaning over, I'd hate it for it to kind of be encroaching where.
Yeah, from the fog line or a sidewalk.
Yeah.
Pedestrian or traffic.
Because one of these photos, it seems to be hanging over the sidewalk.
Yeah.
Page seventy-one, page seventy-one.
Maybe the spacing for a minute.
Yes.
Texting and riding your bike, you might hit it.
And so, you have a larger, like a car lot, you know, you have, you know, right, which should be where it would park.
Yep. Yeah, I think.
What you have is, just like on Jackson, if you go to the corner of Jackson and Lund, there's a barber shop, and he's got a feather sign, one on Lund and one on Jackson. I don't know how far, you know, that's out of the city. But they do a lot of creative things with it, and I don't, personally, I don't think there was a lot of thought put into why they're positioned where they are. And when I said a plan, I think that's what I was getting at, is that the businesses actually put some thought into why they are positioning them where they are.
Yeah, I just, just, yeah, it's difficult from a, you know, to interpret that, and it's subjective, and just the man-hours associated with it.
Also, like Carter's, though, that would be an exception because it's not next to the street. It's next to a parking lot.
Parking lot.
So, would it be even relevant, governed by this?
Well, I think if they only had two, I'm okay with the ten feet. I'm just concerned about ten feet if there's twelve of them.
Or twenty-four.
Yeah.
That actually is more directional.
So, if you want to do two, ten feet apart.
It's a lot easier to see where their entry is because it's just the back of buildings.
Do you have enough direction, you think, Nick?
Yeah, I've got quite a few notes here. So, I'm gonna, I think I need to explore this a little bit more with my staff. Maybe reconvene the advisory committee, take it back to planning commission, and just have a little bit more discussion. And I think we could probably have something done in a month or two and back before you as an add-on to this ordinance. But I think that it's important to get this in place now that we have something that I think most people are agreeing on, on all the other types of signs.
I have one clarification on page thirteen. We're talking, it's D. There's the second paragraph from the bottom, flashing signs or lights. Just how do you define exceeding the equivalent of twenty watts per lamp just as we get into the era of LED where you could have a.
It's lumens, isn't it, is what we're concerned about now.
Well, that's what I mean, so how does that? You know what I'm saying? If I had a twenty-five-watt LED bulb they could be putting out. So, just, maybe that's written the right way, maybe there's a definition of.
There are, I think there is a.
Equivalent of twenty-five watts.
It's lumens.
Yeah, they convert watts to lumens, I think, for the LED type.
Should we go with a lumens definition, then?
Well, it says exceeding the equivalent of twenty-five watts per lamp, but maybe it needs to say per incandescent.
Well, right, right, exactly.
Or just go with a lumens number.
Right, because a twenty-five-watt LED should have a lot brighter than a twenty-five.
I'll ask that question and make a correction in the final.
I'm trying to accomplish it, just, it's good.
I have one selfish question, and that's bus stop signs. I am assuming falls under retention.
It does.
Government signs.
Yep. Chris, you have a question for him?
I have a question to tell you, I see this thing about sign walkers are allowed. Does that mean the sign standards are allowed anywhere?
What's that? They, we are allowing sign walkers, and there was a case, there was actually a Kitsap County case from a few years back, and I think this has been, this policy is specifically tailored to comply with what came out of that court ruling at the time. So, I think that's a protected form of speech in Washington.
So, they can, they can spin it, they can be like the Carter's family.
Correct. We, the standards.
What the answer was is we believe it's a protected form of speech.
Yeah, but I think the standards that we have for it are within our ability to control. So, we can have limited restrictions on it, but we have to allow it in some form.
So, we can say where they could stand, but not what they could hold.
Yeah.
What other, Nick, you'd.
So, then, the optional language, I think the question, and I believe that was page nine, no, I'm sorry, sixteen. Would the council want to restore that optional language, or do you want to leave it out for now?
It's really on page seventeen, isn't it?
Sixteen and seventeen.
I would say leave it out for now, but I don't know, I don't feel that strongly about it, except it seems a little prohibitive.
Well, it's, you know, without running a couple of projects through the code and seeing sort of what the product is, I think, you know, if we get one big project, we're going to know pretty quickly whether we're on the mark or off the mark.
Could we leave it in, in strikeout in the final?
No.
Just so they can see what might happen if they overdo it? I don't know.
I would actually, I think it makes more sense to leave it in, and then the event a project comes forward, and they have good reason for us to say, look at this. We've done all the schematics, would you, would you look at amending your sign code? Then I think we'd do that time versus putting ourselves in the position to go, oops.
Or is there, is there an option, is there an option to, for some sort of a variance? If something want, you know, put this in with some sort of provision to get a variance, if there's a.
You're probably not going to meet the threshold for a variance just because you want more signage than what's allowed.
Self-imposed need for a variance.
It is to be subjective again.
Well, true.
So, yeah.
It's a pretty big sign.
Why don't we leave it in and then see what the flavor of the strikeout is?
Right.
Because it's steel.
And then, we're protecting ourselves.
Yeah, that is the risk, is that once we've permitted a sign, it's going to be there forever until they voluntarily take it down.
Five hundred square foot sign on, you know, oops.
So, is that, is that everybody who would like to see the draft come forward in that form, or?
Yes.
Are we divided here?
I like to approach. If they don't like it, they can come and see if we can make a change in the design.
If they have a valid reason, and they've got schematics and drawings, like, boy, that really makes sense. Great job on that design.
Okay.
It seems safe, because there seemed to be some who liked to push the envelope, which isn't a bad thing, but at least we would be covered.
Yeah.
Do the feather signs in the A-boards count if someone signs their business again?
Yeah, and I guess that actually raises another really good point. It would count, and the reason this optional language was written when feather signs weren't even part of this code, feather signs were added to this draft code by the committee because they wanted those. The draft that we brought forward did not allow any feather signs. And so, that total amount would include their feather signs and potentially limit how many feather signs you're going to have.
So, if they maximize their signage on the building, then they potentially couldn't have a feather sign.
Correct. So, that's the give and take of this, and that's why, that actually leads you to develop a marketing plan for your site, because you have a limited, you know how big each individual sign can be, but you've really got to think about how you want to allocate.
Some of all perks.
Yeah.
I like that.
I do, too.
Are we done with signs for tonight?
I have one more question.
Sure.
The truth is that billboards are not allowed at this time, no new ones.
No new ones.
No new ones, correct.
And a billboard isn't even defined in this code. A billboard is a type of freestanding sign that is much bigger than what our code will allow.
Here's your quote.
You know, one thing I didn't see in this, and maybe I don't know where to look for it, but I remember for political signage, if there is a primary, there was an agreement back in the day that signs could be kept up instead of being taken down.
So, political signs, that is by definition content. So, we allow temporary signs, and they have to comply with the temporary sign regulations. And so, you, if you're a residential property and you want to put signs on your property, it can be a real estate sign, it can be a political sign. We don't care, you just have a maximum number of temporary signs that you're allowed, and that's, you know, that's the upper limit.
Okay, let's go, let's talk about the political signs again. In that, when I ran for election the first time, there was time limitations. Are those gone now also?
No time limitations, because we don't distinguish between your real estate sign or your.
And we still don't allow a sign in the right-of-way.
We don't allow a sign, well, we will allow certain signs in the right-of-way with a street use permit, but that's a separate permit you get through Public Works. There's safety criteria, ADA accessibility, and so, he has total discretion to approve or deny those. But you're talking about A-board signs and a handful of other sign types that are allowed in the right-of-way with a right-of-way use permit.
I liked it better when we concentrated the time.
To tease it a little bit. There you go. There you go.
Okay. Yeah, and the, that, I think that is the hardest part of this new content neutral standard is that, you know, it's rational to say that you want to allow political speech, but because you can't distinguish between political or other forms of speech, you have to set an allowance that allows political speech, but also allows somebody to put up any political speech that they want. If it's anti-war or, you know, pro, pro-whatever issue they care about, there's no season for it. You can speak politically anytime and you can sell your house anytime.
Clear as mud?
Absolutely.
That's a big change.
It was a big decision.
Right. That's what drove all this.
Okay, are you ready to talk about residential and fence guidelines, design guidelines? We previously had this, we gave, some of us gave thoughts and comments back to Nick's staff and picked another stab at it. So what, what's changed?
All right. So, um, at our last meeting, we, um, had a, a very lengthy discussion of what people liked, where people thought there could be some clarification, uh, in the, the draft code. And so, uh, one of the things that we've done is we've gone in and we've tried to add some additional pictures to really clarify what it is that we're seeking, whether it's garage doors or, uh, fence, kinda defining a fence so that it's not just a blank surface and, and making sure that it's, it's broken up nicely and isn't, uh, overbearing. We have really revised the applicability portion of the code. And, um, you have to comply with the design standards, uh, for any additions to your building or when the, the property valuation, or the project valuation exceeds fifty percent of the taxable value for the structure. However, that's not to say that we're gonna make you move your garage relative to your house as part of a remodel project. That would be, uh, really pretty crazy, I think. And also, we don't want you to have to add windows to an existing wall where you're not changing that particular wall of your house. So we're trying to be reasonable and say that the new portion of the house needs to comply, but the old portion, most of the things can stay the same unless you're specifically changing your siding or, um, or modifying that portion of the house in some way. Yes.
Yes.
So again, one of the, we had a menu for how you can de-emphasize your garage. And one of the ways that you can do that is by providing a, a decorative, uh, decorative details on your garage door. And the question was, well, what is a decorative detail on a garage door? And so we've tried to provide some examples, we found a bunch of, uh, kind of architectural grade garage doors. And it can be as simple as adding, uh, faux, uh, hinges and, and door handles to your, your door. It can be the window pattern, it can be, you know, being a wood grain type, uh, garage door. I think there's, there's a lot of possibilities for that, it's just basic squares don't count.
Question, could somebody paint sort of a tropolite type design where it looks like it's windows, but it's really painted on with that pass?
I think so, yeah.
So we could employ a lot of artists.
Yeah. We also, um, we looked at the driveway standard for accessory dwelling units because we didn't, uh, I think previously we were, we were requiring, an additional driveway for an ADU, but we didn't wanna end up with three, three driveways on one lot. So we clarified that. Let's see, we, we provided, uh, distinctive window treatments. One of the questions was what is, give us some examples of what a distinctive window treatment is. So we sent, we found photos of that, of what works and what doesn't accomplish that goal. I think we changed stucco because there are some stucco houses, especially at McCormick Woods, it's allowed and they do not have to be trimmed in masonry wood. Uh, it's encouraged, but that, that doesn't really mean anything in, in the scheme of our regulations. But if you read it, hopefully you'll do the right thing. And then going on to the fences section, I think what we heard was we really need to kinda just make the fence section a little bit easier to understand. And so we found a bunch of examples and added pictures of, of what we mean by certain, uh, things. And that included, uh, how fences need to be stepped down a hillside or, or be built when they're on a slope. It includes, uh, for fences that are really long, like a two-hundred-foot fence, making sure that it's, it's not just one solid plane that is kinda broken up and looks, uh, nice considering how, how massive it would be. And then we provided examples of, uh, fences with a thirty-five percent open area. Pre- previously, this is a fifty percent open area, but we realized that a lot of fences that are, like picket-style fences, typically have less than fifty percent open, it's, it's more like sixty-five. And so we wanted to provide some examples, uh, of, of different things that would satisfy that, the more transparent type fence. Also, as part of our unified development code, we clarified the fence height standards for residential zones because we had limited fence heights in, in non, for non-residential code in the IBC to six feet. But we never did that in the residential code. And so I didn't feel it was necessary to state that in this location and in another location. That way if one code changes in the future, we don't end up with, uh, having to fix two things at the same time unnecessarily. So I removed the references to the, uh, the fence height. And I did state that in some cases, if it's over six feet, it may require a permit, but that just indicates that you may need to look at a different section of code. So I've tried to address the concerns and, as I've stated previously, there's no, there's no magic way to, to address single-family design standards. I mean, you can have a very difficult process with a board that has a lot of flexibility. Or you can have a simple process that provides options, but, you know, every now and again, you're gonna get something that doesn't quite fit your standards and it's, it's hard to figure out how to get that, uh, to, to get the approval. But this is also much easier for somebody to understand what it is that we're looking for. And so in, in most cases, this is gonna work just fine. It's, it's a very rare case where you're gonna have a problem, but you don't wanna make everybody go through a very complicated design review process, to do something that could easily fit, fit something that can be written such as this. So, um-
We, I mean, we just had a few problems out there, and I think this is addressing those issues that we were having, without being hopefully overly restrictive.
Nick, it looks like you've got a picture of my fence in here with the red lines here.
We've got, we've got a few of the answers.
I'll, I will let you know enforcement, no.
You gotta wait to fix it.
I know, you were partnering with some of the restrictions that we were putting in it, are you?
This is also one of those, go there, you just have to run for a while.
Cindy?
So I noted that the duplexes, when you're, when it's on a corner, you encourage entries from two separate streets. Which, um, ooh, sorry, I think that actually is a very cool idea, but you don't see it that often. More often than not, you do see it right from the front. And that actually makes for probably a better living space. So when I saw that, I was like, ooh, I really like this. I don't know how difficult that is for the builder, but I like the idea.
So it, do you want this to come forward, uh, I mean, we could bring it forward as soon as the twenty-seventh? If, if you're comfortable with it the way that it's written? All right, we'll get it on the agenda.
I like it, I like the pictures.
It's a great one.
Easy to understand.
Then, as Mr. Deener said, there's, I mean, we put this in place, we find out, there could be things we wanna tweak with this.
What, what were the, what were the complaints, specifically that the council members all have?
It's, it's some of the pictures, we've had a problem with, um, uh, fences built backwards. There's an example of it that's in the pictures here on Sydney Avenue. And we're, we're lots, you know, squeezing it, you know, and I appreciate the, the need to, you know, squeeze as many houses as they can and, and to, into the development. We were ending up with the backsides of garages with blank, uh, you know, T-one-eleven sides to the arterial streets. And so that's some of the things initially we were trying to address. So Beck, you in? There's, there's exam, there's examples of what, yes. So trying to make the, the garage a less prominent feature from the arterial street and not have fences that were getting the backside of the fence to, to the main street.
I think there were some examples in the May work-study packet of photos, uh, of some of the things that concerned us. But, you know, a lot of what goes into residential architectural garage, uh, design is, how, what's the relationship between the, the living space of the house and the garage of the house relative to the street? And if your house is mostly garage, it, it sort of becomes a massive, um, you know, automobile-oriented living space as opposed to a, a people living space.
Beck, you had a-
But I, I just wanted to, there are two areas that I have difficulty with. One is on page eighty-nine. And it's the facade transparency. And in that first sentence, I'm going to jump to the end of the first sentence. It says, "Or incorporate window trim at least four inches in width that features colors that contrast with the base building color." And exceptions will be considered where the building employs two or more of the distinctive treatments, okay? I don't, it, it troubles me that we're going to require specifically at least four inches of trim in a color that contrasts with the base color. I should think that would be up to the building owner, I don't know why it has to be a different color. And I want you to know that not one, I could, my home cannot comply with this rule. I do not have anything around my windows, I do not have shutters, I do not have, um, windows containing more than two glass panes, I do not have stained or custom windows or an exterior window sill. So my home cannot comply with this. And so it troubles me that, um, we have something in here, I consider this inappropriate. I, I just, I wanna say that. I also wanna say on the garage door piece, where we are not, um, there was something about the garage doors. And we were concerned with they, if they were white. And then we, now we're consider, requiring them under certain conditions that they have windows. I walk at McCormick Woods all the time, you know, I walk there regularly. And there are numerous, numerous garage doors that are white, that have no windows, that are not inappropriate at all. So I think, I think we've just, I, I think we're trying to solve a, a problem because I, I agree with the issue that we have in some of our smaller lot developments. I agree with that completely. But I think this is a little overarching for the problem that we're trying to solve.
So I didn't see in here where it required windows, it's just one of the options you can choose to. So it's a menu, and so you could have, for example, painted a color other than white, that would be one thing you could do.
Oh, for the garage.
Put a couple hinges on it.
Yeah, just paint, just paint it.
It's just a list.
Yeah, so just choose two of the following. And so it's not requiring windows. So I read through that too, and I, I don't think there's anything in here that's restricted at all.
And that's only if you're setting the garage forward of the house. If you're, if the garage is set back recessed from the front wall of the house, you don't-
Right.
You don't have to do any of it, you could have, you could have a blank garage door.
On page eighty-four.
Page, yeah, page eighty-four.
And on the window treatment, it's not that we're, we're gonna be the window police and run around and make you come out and change your windows. It's, it's, and, and maybe is this, does this need to apply only to the, the facings, where facing a street?
Yeah, I, I suppose you could change it, but I wanted to point out that the window trim white is a contrasting color if your house isn't also white. So it's, I don't think, I don't think we're talking about, you know, three-color paint schemes on a house or anything like that. It's, it's just, uh-
One thing to-
I, I don't understand why, why we would require it to be in contrast. Uh, you know, that's, that's just my personal take.
One thing to consider here too, though, your, your four-inch piece of trim, your one-by-four isn't, it's one and, it's three and a half. So, it's your dimensional lumber isn't working.
I can buy a one-by-six and rip it down.
Well, you could. But it should be three and a half inches.
Right, I agree, that's a good catch, and it's not, yeah.
I, I understood what you meant, but-
Yeah.
I don't have seven inches of space between my windows. You can paint something on there to make it look like it-
She didn't have to do anything.
I don't have to do anything, my house is built.
And as long as she's not doing-
As long as I'm not remodeling.
Over fifty percent of the value. You can replace your windows, you just, no.
Could you do that on your house? Put three and a half inches of trim around each one of them?
Um, I couldn't, I have brick.
I know.
But I have, but I have, uh-
Different types of windows.
I have let, I have letted windows, I mean, my house would-
Could, could you build your house today and meet this qualification?
Yes.
Your house is-
Ye- yes, because I've got the, the individual paint windows. And then I've got the win, the window boxes, was it, was an option, I've got the window boxes.
My house has double hung windows. I don't have three and a half inches around them.
Double hung is two paints.
Yeah.
You qualify.
You're in.
You're in.
The other, the other question- The other question I had was on the roof line and, um, it said, I'm looking ninety-three. And under, go down to seven roof design, they're going to be, all buildings with pitched roofs shall have a minimum slope of four feet vertical rise every twelve feet of horizontal rise. And then it said a continuous pitched roof shall extend no more than thirty-five linear feet unless it contains roof elements. And then it goes on and talks about what the roof elements can be. And I know that my roof is just about exactly thirty-five, um, feet across. But I think my old home that was a rambler, I think it was forty feet. And it was just, you know, it was just a, a roof and, and a rambler. Again, um, I just question, I see these as meeting the needs of today's small lots. And other areas, I don't find that they're that.
Well, I guess that's primarily what we're seeing in-
Right.
In our subdivisions.
Yeah.
We didn't have any feedback from builders or anything on, on this, that's specific.
No, we sent it to them and-
Right. Seems to be what's being built.
We also tried to scale this in terms of cost options. And so we included in the menu some reasonably cheap alternatives. So not that everything is inspired by the cops or scored around.
I guess just trying to have better curb appeal on our community is really what this is about.
No, I understand the goal.
I kinda like the sign code, I like starting a little bit conservative. And if, you know, we're to hear testimony or something seems to be really out of line, then an amendment could be made. Versus, again, going, oh, man, I wish we would've done that two months ago.
And, and I would-
To understand that that's a potential option, a lot of people come in and say, this is the rule, I gotta look for it.
And the other thing is our new unified code actually has a process where somebody can apply for a code amendment. And so you can actually seek specific language changes to the code and submit it and have it considered. So we have a process for that to come from the public as well as to be initiated internally.
Great, thank you.
Okay, good job. We're gonna have a brief executive session, I've, I've got a couple of items here I just wanna address with you guys quickly. I, we can't take action on this tonight, but I will be bringing or, forward, uh, the list of change orders next Tuesday for the seven-twenty building. I had, remember in the procurement policies, I have a ten percent, uh, change order authority. We are twenty-four hundred dollars, we will be, uh, we would be. And you guys will need to approve the next change, all of them and that next change order, uh, next Tuesday. And to date, I have, we have six change orders. and that next change order, uh, next Tuesday, and to date, I have, we have six change orders. Uh, the sixth one is the one that's gonna tip us over that twenty-four hundred, and, uh, we're, the first one related to, um, beams, when we took the ceiling out, we un, discovered that some of the attachment points weren't what they need to be, and we had to have some engineering work done, um, there. So we've got twenty-four thousand nine hundred dollars in change orders to this point. Then we, uh, found that we needed to replace the water service line where we had made sense, since we had the sidewalk jackhammered up, that place, that was thirteen hundred dollars. Number of lighting changes came about, um, for about five thousand dollars, and, as well as, we found, uh, he, duct, duct work that didn't meet code in particular, it wasn't, um, it was just inside of a wall void and, and- and just a cavity, so, we had to correct those things as we came along. Uh, the one we're at right now, one part of it is our new sign, and, uh, we get to pay our, uh, permit fees too. So, uh-
We have feather signs?
Well, no feather signs, but we have a, a, a tasteful metal sign with raised letters on it, um, the sign's twenty-eight hundred. Twenty-five hundred dollars, in that range. The one that, it was a three thousand dollar change order that, what tipped it over this, as of this morning, was, uh, when they pulled the carpet out, there's some evidence of some moisture, 'cause it's slab-on-grade, and the way the gr- ground sits, the, what was specked was just regular carpet pad, and the glue for all of this is water-based, which doesn't work. So we've gotta have a, um, a, something that's not water-based, and a different type of pad, and they won't warranty the carpet installation if we don't put the right type of pad and glue down, so, it's, we gotta do it right. And so, we're to that, so, that change order's through, in itself is three thousand dollars, so. Anyway, so next Tuesday, I'll bring the detail to it, I just wanted to make sure nobody had any heartburn before we, they're hanging the false ceiling, we're putting cabinets in, we're about a week out, so, the magic question is, though, we'd like to have a little reception before one of the council meetings, you know, in our open house over there. There's two potential dates, the first is July eleventh, we'll be about half-done moving in, but the space would be done. The next available, I've got the work-study, and then I've got a conference, so the next available date would be August eleventh. We'll definitely be up and running over there, so would you prefer it, once we're all moved in and up and running over there, or would you like to do it sooner, is, is the question?
I'd like to see it finished sooner, August.
Okay, August eighth?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll make it happen. And I, one other thing I wanted to just touch, um, I'll, I'll, we'll, we'll talk about it later. Thank you, um, we'll bring that forward, so.
Before the executive session, I just wanted to ask, does anybody wish to sponsor the sign ordinance? Clark's gonna ask me for that tomorrow, and I'm gonna have an answer, so I get it now.
I would.
All right, thank you.
Okay.